Call the City Council Meeting to order, roll call please.
Thank you. Alderman Lewitan?
President.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Knite?
Here.
Alderman Felice?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Kadawa?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Corrin being President, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes, December 6, 2007? So moved. Is there a second? By Alderman Coles, on the question, any comments? Alderman, please.
I only have one, on Item D, the ordinance amending Chapter 5 for the liquor licenses. It says, "I questioned the merit of the ordinance." All I was questioning was that the Topgolf license was missing. The TG.
I believe that's correct. We'll make that adjustment. Do you need the reference on the page? Alderman, please, could you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page four, Item D.
Any other comments, corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills, Alderman Wesley?
I've obtained a motion to pay the bills $1,638,391.97.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the City Council at this time regarding items that are not on the agenda? When we get to that item on the agenda, we'll have citizen comment again. Any citizens wish to address City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am. This is at this time regarding items not on the agenda. Okay, so I'll recognize you again.
I was just waiting, we didn't understand that correctly.
Okay. I do have a couple written in communiques. First one addressed to Mr. Williams. "I just wanted to take the opportunity to drop you a note regarding two city employees, Joe Johnson and John Forrest. I recently represented a property owner in Wooddale regarding a property maintenance dispute. Based upon some health issues, my client had allowed this, his property, to become out of compliance with city ordinances. Throughout the entire court proceeding, both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Forrest were extremely fair and compassionate with the property owner. During every court appearance, they took extra time to talk to the resident to explain exactly what needed to be done, and what would and would not be acceptable as far as becoming code compliant. In the end, we were able to get the property into compliance and get the case closed. Again, Mr. Forrest and Mr. Johnson, Mr. Joe Johnson, did a fantastic job in balancing their duties and getting code compliance on behalf of the city of Wooddale, and being fair and compassionate to the resident. Very truly yours, Marshall Subach of Hunt Kaiser Aranda and Subach." Then I have a second letter addressed to Mr. Noack. "I just wanted to let you know how much we appreciated working with Mr. Joe Johnson." Joe apparently has a good PR person out there. Is that you, Alderman Wesley, or is? How much we appreciated working with Joe Johnson to help our daughter clear out her apartment so it could be brought up to code. Joe's patience, knowledge, integrity, and understanding helped to deal with and solve a difficult situation. Best wishes for a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Respectfully, the Stausmanis family." On the first item, I contacted the Cruciani family, and they are not able to be with us tonight. So we will redo the resolution, and we will have that available for you on January 17th. So without objection, I'm deleting that from the agenda this evening. Next item is an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the municipal code of the city of Wooddale to provide for additional Class AR license. This would be the owner, Oscar Herrera, on Front Street, who would be looking to do a restaurant, light food with alcohol. We do not have any liquor licenses available. So it's up to you whether you want to add an additional AR license or not. Is there such a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
On the question?
Question. Mr. Mayor, where was that again? Front Street?
Front Street, yes, in one of the vacant storefronts.
Okay.
Alderman Shockey?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was that beer and wine only?
I believe the AR is "all alcohol with the restaurant cannot serve packaged goods," I believe. Yes. Anything further? This should be to increase by one.
Excuse me, what is the name of the place?
I don't know if a name has been established yet. Madam Clerk?
They haven't named it yet.
Is this currently a vacant?
The young man owns the building. He owns that whole building.
Is this where the beauty shop was, or is this near the liquor store?
It's... Where is it?
It's in the building on Front Street, where Popular Real Estate is at.
Yeah.
It's at that building.
And what is the seating capacity of the place?
It's often talked to with the Building Department. I sent him to the Building Department first. When he came to the office, I said, "Go to the Building Department, see if you can even do that." The Building Department and the Fire Department gave him an okay. Then he sent a letter to the mayor, and here we are.
Is there adequate parking there for all the seating that they have? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all the details is when he applies for a business license will be reviewed by the Building Department, safety issues, and parking, and other, based on the seating capacity of the restaurant. So that still is to come. The only issue tonight is do you or do you not want to add one additional AR license? Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
That passes. Counsel, I place before you the appointment of Roy Wesley to the unexpired term of Bert Cruciani to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Plan Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman Lewitan?
Abstain.
That passes. Counsel, I announce the appointment of John Brick and Mark Winger to the Clean Air Counts Committee. And lastly, under my report, I wish to issue a Christmas greeting to the citizens. And given today's legal climate, I had it reviewed by the Building Department, I had it reviewed by the Police Chief, and most importantly, the City Attorney. So you may notice some changes in this Christmas greeting this year. Whereas, on or about the night prior to Christmas, there did occur a certain improved piece of real property, hereinafter referred to as the house, a general lack of stirring by all creatures therein, including but not limited to, a mouse. A variety of foot apparel, example stocking, socks, et cetera, had been affixed by and around the chimney in said house in the hope and or belief that Saint Nick, also known as Saint Nicholas, also known as Santa Claus, hereinafter referred to as Klaus, would arrive at some time thereafter. The minor residents, i.e. the children, of the aforementioned house were located in their individual beds and were engaged in nocturnal hallucinations, i.e. dreams. Wherein visions of confectionery treats, including but not limited to candies, nuts, and/or sugar plums, did dance, cavort, and otherwise appear in said dreams. Whereupon the party of the first part, sometimes hereinafter referred to as I, being the joint owner in fee simple of the house, with the party of the second part, hereinafter referred to as Mama, and said Mama had retired for a sustained period of sleep. At such time, the parties were clad in various forms of headgear, i.e. a kerchief and a cap. Suddenly, without prior notice or warning, there did occur upon the unimproved real property adjacent and pertinent to said house, i.e. the lawn, a certain disruption of unknown nature, cause, or circumstance. The party of the first part did immediately rush to the window in the house to investigate the cause of such disturbance. At that time, the party of the first part did observe, with some degree of wonder and/or disbelief, a miniature sleigh, hereinafter referred to as the vehicle, being pulled and/or drawn very rapidly through the air by approximately eight reindeer. The driver of the vehicle appeared to be, and in fact was, the previously referenced Klaus. Said Klaus was providing specific direction, instruction, and guidance to approximately eight reindeer, and specifically identified the animal co-conspirators by name: Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, and Blitzen, hereinafter referred to as the deer. Upon information and belief, it is further asserted that an additional co-conspirator, named Rudolph, may have been involved. The party of the first part witnessed Klaus, the vehicle, and the deer intentionally and willfully trespass upon the roofs of several residences located adjacent to and in the vicinity of the house, and noted that the vehicle was heavily laden with packages, toys, and other items of unknown origin or nature. Suddenly, without prior invitation or permission, either expressed or implied, the vehicle arrived at the house, and Klaus entered said house via the chimney. Said Klaus was clad in a red fur suit, which was partially covered with residue from the chimney, and he carried a large sack containing a portion of the aforementioned packages, toys, and other known, unknown items. He was smoking what appeared to be tobacco in a small pipe in blatant violation of the Illinois Non Smoking Clean Air Act. Klaus did not speak, but immediately began to fill the stockings of the minor children, which hung adjacent to the chimney with toys and other small gifts. Said items did not, however, constitute gifts to the said minors pursuant to the applicable provisions of the IRS. Upon completion of such task, Klaus touched the side of his nose, flew, rose, and/or ascended up the chimney of the house to the roof, where the vehicle and the deer waited and/or served as lookouts. Klaus immediately departed for an unknown destination. However, prior to the departure of the vehicle, deer, and Klaus from said house, the party of the first part did hear Klaus state and/or exclaim,[787.51][788.08]"Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night," or words to that effect. Maybe it was, to be politically correct, "Happy Holidays." But on behalf of the City Council and the city staff, we wish to all the citizens a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Blessed Quonset, and a very prosperous New Year. And that concludes my report. Mr. Manisher?
No report.
And that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Kadawa?
Number six.
Number six will be removed. Alderman Wesley?
Seven.
Item seven will be removed. May I have a motion to approve the agenda being items one, two, three, four, and five? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda, being approval of a snow fence on Montrose, approval of 2007 roadway project pay estimate number three, approval of special service area 14 pay estimate number three, approval of contract award annexed roof project, and approval of the answers to policy questions for the street sufficiency study 2008 through 2018. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Wesley? Was it? Alderman Felice? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
Those items are approved. That brings us to committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Shockey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council concur with the December 13th meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee to deny case number 07-V11 Petrovich for a three-foot height variation of an accessory structure, the garage, at 249 North Ash.
Is there a second?
Wait, do you repeat?
He's making the motion out to deny.
Is there a discussion?
There hasn't not been a second yet. My understanding is we had a request from the petitioner to table, to send it back to committee?
What if?
Well, let me first ask, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. Alderman Lewitan?
Okay. I'd like Roger Noack to come to the speaker position. Roger?
Noack?
Can you come to the microphone? And my position has changed over the last week, based on the following thing. A lot of things that we're doing here in regard to this represents basically a judiciary decision whether to go ahead and allow somebody to do something because it is a variation from the zoning codes. This same committee, last month, decided that we would review the zoning codes. We would basically rewrite all of the zoning codes. We hired a zoning code company to rewrite the zoning codes. Among the zoning codes are the height of buildings, which are currently 30 feet, and garages, which are 15 feet. And so basically, we're having like a constitutional convention to rewrite the constitution of the city as far as the zoning laws are concerned. And this is going to happen next year. If this would happen next year after the zoning variation, the zoning laws are rewritten, and they were to change 30 and 15 to 40 and 18, for example, then this issue wouldn't even come before this committee. I mean, this council. So what I am suggesting is questions being asked of Ross. If, how do the citizens go about participating in the changing of the zoning code that we have, for the first time in what, 30 years? First, confirm, how many years is it since we called for a rezoning ordinance law to be passed?
Thirty-two.
Okay, so this is the first time in 32 years that we have taken this step. So even half the people living in Wooddale weren't even alive at that time. So this is a major change that could take place. Now, how do individual citizens, like Chris, and his parents, and everybody else, get involved in changing the codes at the time that we've announced that we're going to change them to go from the current heights to higher heights?
Well, their first step would be to hopefully attend one of the public hearings. But if they should understand something with relation to the zoning ordinance ahead of time, they can certainly write a letter to, and address it to the city of Wooddale Community Development Department, and we will certainly have that as a specific issue when we do begin our discussions of that particular section of the zoning code. And may I just remind you too, is that in the near future, we'll be having our joint staff city council representative meetings along with the Land Vision consultants. It's just at this point in time, that particular section of the zoning ordinance is not going to be addressed for some time.
Okay. Would petitions from citizens be in order? And can builders make petitions too? I mean, there must be a lot of builders that would like to get more footage and sell more expensive homes.
Certainly, if an individual is a builder within our area, within our city, he too has the right to at least voice his opinion.
Okay. So even if the petitioner goes back to committee, and the committee sends it back to the council, and the council eventually votes it down, he's not without recourse to come before basically a judiciary decision to participate in the rewriting of the zoning laws?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much for explaining that. I wanted to bring it out, a declination of consent at this time. Because of the particular nature of the fact that we're in a 32-year cycle for the first time, and maybe it won't be that long to the next one, but since we're in the first...
We certainly hope not.
Yeah, I hear you, and I agree with you. Since we're in a cycle, we're doing something that I think hasn't been done since, before Chris was born, that any citizen, or group of citizens, or builders in our city has an opportunity to make the laws conform to modern wishes and building expectations.
You're quite correct. Petitioning through the City Council.
Okay. Thank you. I basically conclude by saying I'm addressing this to Chris and anybody else who wants to change the laws and can't get it through City Council. And it is effective to deal with zoning laws. This is your great opportunity. It's the first time your parents in 32 years have had a chance to do this. Don't let it go by. And anybody listening on the TV, the same thing. If you have something in the zoning laws that you feel should be taken care of, this first time in 32 years, you've got an opportunity to do something about it. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
I talked to the petitioner, and he said that he would like this to be sent back to filling in zoning, and he said that he would make a different drawings of his garage, and then come back with a letter stating of what he's changed and everything. So I would like to make a motion to table it and change the motion.
Second.
There's a motion out for it though.
A motion to table always takes precedence over any existing motion, so does a motion to adjourn for that matter. Is your motion to... Is your motion to table to PZB 11008?
11008, yeah.
The next committee meeting?
Yeah, 11008.
Were there any citizens that wanted to discuss this issue? Mr. Petrovich, did you want to, was that your desire? Okay. Motion to table is non-debatable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I believe the ayes have it. Motion carries. That brings us to item two. Alderman Shockey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council concur with the December 13th meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee to approve case number 07-SU12 Eagle's Claw Cycle Special Use Request for a 5,000-square-foot motorcycle sales and service in the B2 Limited Service District at 365 East Irving Park Road, with all work being done inside the building, and work limited to between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and no activity allowed behind the building outside these same hours in deference to the nearby residential community. Do I have a second?
Thank you. I'll interpret that as a motion to direct the attorney to draft the ordinance in conformity with what you just said.
Thank you.
And does the seconder agree? All right, we have another citizen, a number of citizens who want to address this issue. We'll start with Arthur Vialga.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, and citizens that are present here. My name is Arthur Vialga. I reside at 194 East View in Wooddale, and I'd just like to speak on behalf of Eagle Claw Cycle. And please know that I myself am a veteran of the United States Armed Forces, and as a member of American Legion Post 1205, and a motorcycle rider, and a professional here in town, I wholeheartedly give my support to Eagle Claw, knowing that motorcycling is a greater part than it used to be. We need to bash down stereotypes, not relive them, and not concoct more of them. And I believe that a fellow veteran, being able to own a business here in Wooddale, can only serve to make Wooddale a better place, increase our tax base, and provide a valuable service to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vialga. Next, I have Joe Tullow, I think, Tullow?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment. I'm the new owner of the building, and one of the things that we wanted to do is obviously move in and purchase a property in the village of Wooddale because, from what I've heard, that this is a business-friendly community. The business is set, and the building is set empty for quite a while, and we want to make sure that this would be a valuable asset to the community. Services and villages that say no really spend a lot of time never bringing in businesses, and Route 19 should be a viable aspect of the community. And businesses and empty storefronts are not a positive sign for the community. So I think it's important that we do that. I also want to concur with him that fairness should be allowed here, and not stereotypes, and that this is a small business that's going to repair your lawnmowers. Okay, it will also repair snow blowers, any type of mechanical equipment. So the stereotype that this is undesirable is coming in, I think should be, not be, the reason for any negativity. The noise, as one of my colleagues is coming in here, and will tell you about the factor with the noise. There's a lot of noise with 45,000 vehicles down Irving Park Road every day. I also leave you with this. If you've read the Chicago Tribune this morning, Sam Zell, the new owner of the Tribune, has a group called Zell's Angels and is a motorcycle enthusiast. So hopefully, he will be visiting Wooddale and visiting the show. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Donald Bean?
Hi. My name is Donald Bean. I'm a resident of Elkhart Village, but I'm a member of Post 1205 here in Wooddale. And I participated in the Memorial Day Parade, and we ride our bikes through. And, you know, there's never been any noise complaints about that. So my big concern would be that Eagle Claw would be a benefit to your town. And I know I would be bringing my business here. It'll increase your tax base. I'm a disabled vet. I served in two different branches, retired in 99. And I'm definitely not a stereotype, even though I wear a vest and t-shirt and jeans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Harvey Hoyer?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for hearing me. I've been riding motorcycles for 54 years. I own six motorcycles. I live in unincorporated Wooddale on Bryn Mawr. And I'm also a member of Post 1205, American Legion. I do a lot of my business right here in Wooddale. And the noise issue, which has come up, is almost a non-issue as far as the, all the 45,000, as it was said, automobiles and trucks that run up and down Irving Park Road, also the trains and the airplanes. I know that Eagle Claw, I know the owner, and I know that we will do everything possible to maintain civility. And I perstated in the Memorial Day Parade and we ride our bikes through and, you know, there's never been any noise complaints about that. So my big concern would be that Eagle Claw would be a benefit to your town and I know I would be bringing my business here. It'll increase your tax base. I'm a disabled vet. I served in two different branches, retired in 99, and I'm definitely not a stereotype, even though I wear a vest and t-shirt and jeans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Harvey Hoyer?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for hearing me. I've been riding motorcycles for 54 years. I own six motorcycles. I live in unincorporated Wooddale on Bryn Mar. And I'm also a member of Post 1205, American Legion. I do a lot of my business right here in Wooddale. And the noise issue, which has come up, is almost a non-issue as far as the, all the 45,000, as it was said, automobiles and trucks that run up and down Irving Park Road, also the trains and the airplanes. I know that Eagle Claw, I know the owner, and I know that we will do everything possible to maintain civility and the stereotypes that a lot of people have about all of the motorcycles are misplaced. And I think that the sales tax, if anybody has ever bought anything in a motorcycle shop, you know, they're very expensive, they're very expensive to own. So the sales revenue would be advantageous to the village coffers and I think that's also something that should be considered. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the gentleman if the motorcycles are named Dancer and Prancer and Vixen?
Bojana Petrovich?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I would like to use the projector if I can. That's what I call it. I think it's called something else. It's going to be very short and I'll be very brief with that.
Ms. Petrovich, if you're going to walk away from the podium, which you can do, you can use the portable microphone if you want to point to any of the pictures you have.
Chris, can you move that a little bit because I need this part here? Okay. We used to, okay. All right, here's Irving Park Road, if everybody can see it. Here's Ash, here's Hemlock, and here is the property in question, okay? So this is our home, my husband and I. These are neighbors. This is the back alley that the motorcycle shop wants to use to get in and out, okay? Because they can't use the front, they said. So over here is the liquor store. I have pictures. And then above that are four apartments where they have a lot of children living. This is all down...
Ms. Petrovich?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I get a little nervous. Okay. So anyway, this is another apartment building with businesses on the bottom and then apartments on top. So if I can have the next picture. Well, just anyone, it doesn't matter, just whatever's on top is fine.